Good. My name is Sue Disypel and I'll be the facilitator for the meeting. And before I go any further, Rick?
I just have a couple, I guess, Sue, before you get started, a few official things to do.
Yes, sir.
It is now 6:08, I'll do this officially, 6:08 PM. And I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee for a joint work session. Being that called order, we have a couple things before we get in, one thing before we get into the work session. In the information you were sent were the minutes in the June 23rd, 2015 Urban Renewal Agency Board Meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, I will entertain a motion that we accept the minutes or change them.
So moved.
So moved by, was that you Scott? By Counselor Hill, the second?
Second.
My counsel president Jeffrey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one other thing, what I, just a little clarity I want to add, we are being streamed live tonight besides Comcast and Frontier. We are being streamed live via KLYC. They've been streaming the city council meetings also. So what I ask that you do is please to speak up to make sure that they can hear you on the live stream, so anybody that's tuned in can hear you. If anybody here has a cell phone, we ask that you put it on mute, so it isn't ringing. And of course, try to avoid taking any calls. And if you do have to take any calls or any texts from emergency nature, please go out in the lobby to do that. And what I'd also like to do is maybe an alternate over to our great first leader, Sue, who we love to see come down here. And maybe we can start, we start our work session to just go around since the stream didn't see some of the name tags that we all start. Kim, we'll start with you and introduce yourself. And if you represent an organization, what organization you represent.
Kim Carr, General Manager, McMinnville Water &amp; Life.
Kevin Jeffries, McMinnville City Council.
Carolyn Warwickz.
Larry Yoder, City Council.
Kelly McDonald, the Granary District and McMinnville Economic Development Partnership.
Wendy Stathens with the Planning Commission and the Urban Renewal Advisory.
Rick Olson, Mayor.
Walt Gell with the Advisory Committee for the Urban Renewal District.
And Martha Meeker, City Manager.
Jeb Ladeen with the Advisory Committee of the Urban Renewal District.
I do.
Scott Hill, City Council.
Cassie Solers with the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
We do have Counselor Reden absent, excused absence from our work session tonight. We are expecting that Counselor Drapkin will be in attendance, will be in attendance tonight. So, that being said, we're officially in session. And so now, Sue, I will turn over you for the work, for the work session.
Great, thank you. And I'd just like to point out that Doug Montgomery and Marcia Bagory and Rose Lorenzen are also here, staff from the city. So, you have an agenda in front of you. And I'd like to just give you a brief walkthrough of that agenda. And before that, a little bit of background of how the agenda, as you see it in front of you, came to be. And I'd like to thank Scott and Walt for spending time on the phone with me in advance of putting this agenda together, so that I could get an understanding of what the aspirations were for this meeting. So unbeknownst to them, I take really good notes. And we had a great time talking. Scott and I, of course, go back a ways because I've been the facilitator for the city council for quite a few years, for their goal setting. But Walt I just met, and we found out that we share an entire trajectory from the East Coast to our beautiful state. So we had a wide-ranging conversation. But what I learned is that the outcome that these two told me this group hopes to achieve is to move closer to making a decision. Not that a decision will be made about anything necessarily at this meeting, but just to really see where consensus might be shaping up, where people's thought processes are coming together. And so that's, that's one piece. Eventually, an aspiration is, of course, to establish a suite of projects for five years out. But tonight is the beginning of that, and not the endgame of that. Also, Walt, you said it would be good for council and the committee to establish some kind of a formal relationship, a formal system of check-ins, a reporting. And the committee really would like to hear from council what you expect of us as your committee. So that's something that we'll discuss in the meeting today. And then also, just to get, to get the council up to speed on the road that the committee has traveled, to where they're coming together, where you are coming together now. And so those are the purposes of this meeting. So I think we'll travel quite, quite an interesting road to get there. To look at the agenda itself, we're going to have some level-setting to begin with. City staff is going to do an overview of the potential projects in the Urban Renewal District. We'll take a look at the financial assumptions, sources of funds, and that potential amounts, timeframes, anticipated implications. We'll look at the lessons learned from other jurisdictions with urban renewal districts. We'll look at where we are now with the urban renewal plan. And then there'll be some discussion. And what I want to hear from all of you is, so what kind of assumptions would you draw about your urban renewal district decision-making based on that background, that level-setting? Then we'll go into a consideration of what some alternatives might be. The committee can then present its, the status of its thinking now. I tried to couch that task in some pretty broad language. I call that proposed direction. Some committee members may feel you have a firm direction at this point, and some may not. But just to hear what the thinking of the committee members are is the place to start. And then city staff is going to talk about any other kind of corresponding or complimentary approaches. And then we'll have some additional discussion. So what assumptions can we draw when we see the options as they're arrayed before us? Then council, we're going to hear from you. What are your preliminary thoughts about what you've heard? And then we'll speak a little bit to the committee process, and what councils expect of the committee, what committee needs from council. So that's, that's our, our trajectory for the evening. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda? So hearing none, just one other process consideration. I am a facilitator, and so I do like to let people know what I'm going to be facilitating for. So if everybody could just take one of these little sticky notes and fix it to your agenda. I did ask, I'm kind of telling tales on Walt and Scott here, but I did ask Scott, both Scott and Walt, what advice would you give me as a facilitator? They both said, we've got really astute people here, and sometimes they think deep thoughts. So we've got a lot of ground to cover, so we might need help moving our conversation along. So I'm going to ask you pertaining to that point on the agenda, to please focus on precisely where we are in our agenda for the night. If shiny objects come by that would be fun to talk about, we'll put them in a little bowl all by themselves and keep track of them for another day. The next one is frankness. This would be good for people to speak frankly about what you're thinking about now on this issue. You couple that with fairness and courtesy, and you've got a really great discussion. I guess the other two things that are on there are, which I'm stepping over right now, are brevity. If you see me giving the New Jersey roll, I'm asking you to wind up your comments and let somebody else have the floor. And if we have a lot of frequent flyers who take up a lot of the airtime, we'll go to round robin, so everybody gets a chance. So those, just to warn you, if you see me going like this, it's because of one of those six things. So, so with that, Walt, Mr. Mayor, opening remarks?
How about, as mayor, you know, first of all, I'd just like to thank everybody for getting together. I think the focus, and Sue, talk a little bit about the focus. I think we're to the point now where we've been working on urban renewal for a little bit. Last time we met, I think it was June of last year, in 2015. And I think it's time that we look at what's the next step? What do we move forward and how we move forward? And looking at the members of MIRIC and the council that we have, I think we can come out of this process with a pretty good direction. So again, I just want to thank everybody for their involvement, from my standpoint, from the standpoint of the city council. And I'm looking for big things to come, to come out of this tonight. So Walt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say that I'm grateful to Jeb for emailing Doug, who emailed me and pointed out that I was going to make some opening remarks, which had gone directly by me. So I actually had to think about this. So I wrote down a few things, and these aren't in any particular order of importance, but things that I thought that the, this meeting and the process could benefit from. And the first one was, the first thought that came to me was know the plan. In other words, the city council went through a two-year process of adopting an urban renewal plan, and it has a lot in it. And so this group does not have to start from scratch. It has a large foundation of master planning that's gone on in the past and prioritization that's been undertaken. And there is a starting place called the urban renewal plan. So first, know the plan. What are the projects? What are the financing capabilities of the urban renewal district? Where is the plan? Obviously, we're very close to the beginning, but the plan is gaining speed rapidly, kind of forced along by the road bond, which is a good thing, I think. Do you follow the plan or do you modify the plan? Those are key issues to me at this juncture. Second, follow a process. Maintain a good, strong advisory process. Hold regular sessions. Hire appropriate consultants to assist. Review the status of events regularly. And report regularly back to the city council. Now, I'm talking mainly about the advisory committee, obviously. But, you know, the challenge for us is not to get isolated from the city council, because the city council is the decision-maker. We're just here to give our thoughts. Third, what's the current status of the advisory process? It's fair to say that the Alpine project has been jump-started by the road bond, and that the preliminary engineering is well underway, that public involvement has been sought, that the council is about to get involved in adopting a design project. In other words, that's looming on your agenda, coming before you, I think yet, this month or next month. I'm not sure which. And so once the council adopts a design concept for that project, the decision, the further decision has to be made, does the urban renewal district augment that project or not? And the, and the views, obviously, of the members of the advisory committee are what, partially what we're here tonight to hear and to interact with. And finally, what's the financial feasibility of doing this? Is it possible at this time to augment that project? And if so, by how much? Fourth, and finally, it's important that timely decisions be made going forward. And so the first timely decision probably that the challenge is to make is, how much support is the urban renewal district going to provide to the Alpine project at the outset? Second, and related to that, because there's a very related project called the Fifth Street Improvement Project, which is the corridor between downtown and the Granary District, which is the entrance to the Alpine District. And how much involvement should the urban renewal district lend to that particular project at this early juncture? Should the urban renewal district accelerate the initial downtown master plan improvements that were originally envisioned to occur sometime around 2017, 2018? Should those be brought forward a year or so in the planning process? What is the most cost-effective way to finance the urban renewal district's involvement at whatever level that the council decides to undertake? And what methods of financing utilize the city's good credit without placing city revenues at undue risk? So that's a balancing act that the council has to, has to make. And finally, how and how often does the city council want to consult with the advisory committee, like we're doing tonight? So how often should this process go on? Should it be annuals? Should it be biannual? And so forth? So those are, those are the thoughts that came to me this morning after I, in a panic, discovered I was supposed to say something at the outset.
Sorry about that, Walt. I will put, that was, those were excellent remarks on the fly, but I will put that as a seventh little bullet on my thing to myself. Mourn speakers of obligation to speak.
Read agendas.
Right. So just kind of as the final piece of base touching before we dive into the overview and then the discussion, I thought it would be good to just do a round robin and let, do a base touching with what the vision for this urban renewal in McMinnville is. And if somebody wants to pull on that thread, I would say just speak to, briefly, in a sentence or two, about what seems really opportunistic, or crucial, or important, or wonderful about this for you. When you think about the urban renewal district, what is your, what's most exciting for you or what's your aspiration? And then let's just go around and hear from everybody.
I'll start. For me, it's an opportunity to utilize a resource, legal resource, to generate funds to complete projects and encourage investment that otherwise wouldn't be possible. We have an award-winning downtown that we want to maintain. It's difficult to do that with traditional funding sources, both the city level as well as individual property owners. So to have this financing tool available to encourage development and then reap the benefits of that through the tax increment financing allows us to do some exciting things to keep McMinnville really out in front of a lot of communities and livability. And just, you know, tourism is a big part of our economy now, and it'll continue to develop as we make improvements to the, to the urban renewal area.
Yeah, great, thank you. Shall we just travel around in a circle? Sure, yeah.
Well, I guess I was involved with the Northeast Gateway as well. And that, that partly encouraged us to look at the urban renewal district. We have an area of town, Kelly has been instrumental in starting a spark there. It's very underutilized with regards, it's in the core of the town, it's underutilized with regards to what its uses are now. And so I think some of the excitement for me is that we already have a downtown being, I'm a realtor and also in construction, and we work with a lot of people that come from out of town, out of state, that are building and moving here. And almost everyone moves here partly because of our downtown. So we already have this gem of a downtown, and we have the opportunity to make it even better. So, and we have underutilized area that we can really propel forward into something great. So that's what drives me.
Yeah, oh, great.
I think one of the things that drives me the most is that it isn't, I'd like to say it isn't what we necessarily have above the ground, because I think it's very well, but the whole infrastructure of our urban renewal area, whether it be Main Street, whether it be Fifth Street as part of the transportation bond, whether it be the Northeast Gateway area, is I think we're rapidly falling, and infrastructure, we're rapidly falling behind doing some of the repairs we need to do. And how we could leverage the urban renewal district to make those infrastructure repairs that will allow us to expand and build on top of that, so we are in a mode of fixing, tearing down, fixing and tearing down. So I think the infrastructure is a big one. And as part of the infrastructure, I think the biggest issue to me right now that seems to come up the last year is what, since we have such a vibrant downtown area, what we, how, how through urban renewal can we address, for visitors, address the parking issues downtown? I think the parking issues are a very big, very big situation.
I probably had my turn, but let me just be brief and say that we've, we've had a visioning process that evolved into a master planning process in downtown McMinnville and on into the Gateway District, which left a lot of unfulfilled goals, which required a significant amount of both private and public investment. So Kelly mentioned the notion of stimulating investment, and I see an urban renewal district at its core as a vehicle for stimulating investment, both by the community, the existing property owners, and by newcomers to the community, for the, to, as a method of carrying out the vision that so many people have looked down the road to try and create.
Thanks.
I guess going down the line here.
Yeah.
It's exciting to see, taking that vision and watching folks actually execute it, because, you know, the urban renewal is built to enhance and reflect the culture of what McMinnville has. It's not something that's going to bring us into the 22nd century or whatever. It's not something new. It's something that's going to be a direct reflection of what this town is. I mean, we stated, you know, it's going to be historic, and it's going to be focused on craftsmanship. And so I think that's exciting as a, you know, something to continually submit what McMinnville stands for. And it's also fun to watch all the citizen participation here, because it's a continuation of bringing a lot of synergies together. You know, you have folks who are businessmen in that area. You have other opportunities with other agencies, from visiting McMinnville to working at the NDA. So for that, it's exciting to me to look out 20 years and actually envision that cultural center even growing even more. And it's just fun to watch everybody here make it.
Yeah, great.
I guess I see this as part of fulfilling the dream. And we've been fulfilling the dream in McMinnville for 130 or 40 years. There's always another 20 years, and another 20 years. But, and this is one of a long series of processes that can do that. But the other thing is that I've been driving on Third Street for 52 years. I was dragging the gut when Ruben was in toddling clothes. But if that, and I, in, for some years, I've started to vision being in some kind of really unfortunate accident in this core area. It's, you know, it's nerve-wracking an awful lot as a pedestrian and as a driver, and as the, you know, as the parking is jammed up and the, and the traffic has increased and the, and the railroad crossings have been closed and everything is tighter and, you know. So I'm, I'm really anxious to see things like the transportation plan and urban renewal open this, open the thing up, make it, you know, sort of help fulfill the dream of a, of a user-friendly core area as it continues to develop. So you weren't dragging the gut that long ago.
For me, you know, we all talk about and we love the downtown area, but I feel so fortunate as I look around the room, Marilyn and Walt and Jeb and Cassie have really been around a long time to really drive part of this master plan for a downtown. And I think in my mind, that's what it started, was to enhance the downtown. We've, we've had great plans, but we've never had any money. And then we had something called the Northeast Gateway that came onboard, and then we, urban renewal that we included. And so I see it as taking care of what we've got, kind of perfecting the gem that we have. And I think Walt, or Jeb was talking a little bit about that. We've got some great things on plans that could enhance downtown, but also looking at growth in the Granary Area and the Alpine Area. That's our future, and being able to blend that together. And I think that's the real crux of what we need to do, is where and how, and mixing that together and coming up with the perfect formula that's going to bring success.
I think from my perspective, and it's probably a little more ethereal, Jeb and Walt and Marilyn and those of us, Rick, those of us who've been around for a long time, have watched different generations give volunteer time and expertise, and the city staff giving what they give, and coming up with plans that are executed, sometimes slowly, sometimes more quickly. But the juxtaposition of being the age that I am and knowing quite possibly I won't see what is being planned today, is kind of one of those reality checks that just says, this is what it's like. This is what it's like to invest something not only for now, but for the future. And we have been doing that in this community, as Jeb said, for 130, 140 years. And it's a real privilege to be able to be part of that. I think I agree with what everyone is saying, that downtown is a gem. I am looking forward to having the downtown have a partnership that just grows with Granary District, with the Northeast Gateway, and to watch that develop. And know that the people in this room, and those people before us, and those people after us, will be doing the same thing. And I think that's the legacy we live or leave. So it's not so much as a concrete vision as it is a personal journey. And I think that's really important.
Thank you. So Remy, do you get the drift of what's happening here?
My apologies, everybody, for not being able to be here, for being tardy this evening. And I'm just going to listen to this point, I think.
Okay, okay. Brief, it's, it's a brief sentence or two on what this urban renewal effort means to you. But anyway, yeah, I'll circle back around to you. Ken?
So to me, it's a very good opportunity to have as close to a blank slate to existing culture and development, that hopefully you can make it multi-use. And so one of the things that I've noticed in towns and cities where I live, there's very few places that have a functional multi, truly multi-use urban renewal. And so I've heard a lot of people say and continue to say about downtown area, which is great, and there's a part of it. I have more interest in having a multi-use that covers the opportunity of living and also occupations and the retail area.
For me, I was fairly skeptical of this whole idea at the beginning. But after hearing the ideas and really taking an assessment of this, people involved in it, I don't, I can't think of a better city where we could do this. We have so much talent in this city. We have, as we, as we expand that area into economic, you know, for more commercial and other uses, we have the resources here to help those businesses thrive. And I think if it was any other city, you know, Jeb, you really said something that kind of struck me about your experience down on Third Street, probably back when it was a dirt road, you know?
Ravel, a horse and buggy.
But the street that I live on wasn't, it was not long ago that it was, it was a dirt road. But anyways, the, I like to canoe, I like to kayak, but if you've ever been on a lake in a really, really short kayak, it's really hard to keep it straight, you know? And as a young guy, sometimes I feel like I'm in a short kayak. But having Jeb and Cassie and Marilyn, you know, your experience in this city, you have a very long perspective on things and are able to keep things straight and, and really have a vision for where we've been and where we're going, much broader than I do. So I'm moving into this with much more confidence, because you're all at the table, and I really appreciate you being a part of it and letting me be a part of it. This is really cool, because I hope to be able to live to see this.
Well, I do too, really.
I'm sure will me.
The nicest way to say we're old. We've been a really long time. Walt was reminding me the other day that in 1982, he and I had lunch over at Michael Book, and I was talking him into doing some free work to do the Downtown Association formalized papers or something. And I reminded him that he is still involved, whereas I retired a long time ago. What it means to me is two things. It means that we can continue to do it right, because goodness knows McMinnville has done it right. Look at the downtown and what everybody has said. And that we can plan it. So often, this kind of development has to be done piece by piece by piece, because you don't have the resources to, to do any planning. We have done plans here in the past that have sat on the shelf. This is a chance to do a plan that doesn't sit on the shelf, and that's what urban renewal means to me. So that's why I'm excited about it.
Well, to have the opportunity to use the tools that we have available to us through the tax increment and, and the transportation bond, and to be able to expand into the area and increase the, the attraction and the vitality of the whole downtown, of that whole urban renewal area, excites me, because it's going to bring... renewal area, excites me because it's going to bring more of a diversification in. It isn't just going to be shops on Third Street. It's going to be, as Mr. Carter was saying, a multipurpose thing. And you see, and I see that as, as a huge attraction and, and enhancement of the downtown and the whole city itself and making it an attractive place where people can establish their businesses, as Kelly said, and to invest in it and make it vibrant and productive. And I'm excited about that future then.
Remy, you want to take a shot at this, why you're excited about this?
Well, I've been excited about this for a long time. I've been really impressed with the, kind of the long-term vision of the Urban Renewal District and the financing that was put in place and how that was developed and then the commitment that's come along with it, especially from some really dedicated community members, Charlie McDonald, especially Noe, and a number of people that have given a tremendous amount of time to making this happen. I'm interested at this point to see how it plays out. I think that there's a lot of challenges that are, are going to come up, even though it's exciting and positive and a wonderful thing, that it's, it's already a mixed-use area and has a unique set of challenges within that. And I'm both happy and excited to see how that changes and develops and, and also very curious at how that will play out. And I feel very confident that it'll play out wonderfully because of this team of people that have been working on this for a long time. So that's kind of my thinking on the.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Wow. Even the facilitator feels the adrenaline, you know? It's really exciting. What an opportunity for such a great town. So anybody else want to, is there anything that didn't get said? Well, in that case, I think it's time, Doug, if you want to have the floor and talk about, a little bit about more specifics and potential projects.
I need to have a microphone or something so we record. So I appreciate, thank you.
Do you want to trade places?
Oh, your phone. I'm going to call your pace anyways. You're going to hand out copies of what I'm going to show you earlier. And much like a good book, please don't flip to the last page to see how the story ends. I'll take away from you. Problem.
Do you want the?
Before I start, I really appreciate all the comments you can share on a personal level. This has been one of my greatest joys in my thirty-something years of working in this profession, is to work with a group like this with such passion around this, this project. Let me share this little story. When I was, before I came to this place, I was working in a town in Southern Oregon. And I put together an urban renewal plan for that community. I left there in eighty-six. We'd just sold the bonds for that first set of projects. I happened to have occasion in an interview here for a job for a city attorney where the person was a climate poll. She was commenting that they were now closing out that retirement, that urban renewal district after twenty-five years. And so it made me feel really old, Kevin, at that point. But I think the reality is that we all get to see the efforts and your work here. And it'll be amazing to see you. With that said, Sue's asked me to be the warm-up act before the main act. So in that spirit, I'll be quick and get off the stage so you can get back to the roof. That's very real here. What I'm going to provide for you is some context, some super thought, and maybe a little bit of inspiration to help feed your conversation. So perhaps I'm done here. The topics I've provided to you, I'm sure, are very heavy in text. So you can keep those and refer to the material that's in there for reference as we go through the conversation. Sue's asked me to talk on four points and they differ a little bit from your agenda and the lessons learned. I want to save that for the final piece. Just again, to remind you, we have a hundred and seventy-five acre area that we're talking about. It includes lands generally on the west from Adam Street to the east on Logan and Lafayette Avenue and to the south, First Street, and to the north, generally around Seventh Street. It does not include county or other government properties for the most part. When we talk about the potential projects that are in that plan, they fall into four large categories. We have public infrastructure that accounts for about eighty-five percent of the total funding. And then you see the others. We have property acquisition, debt service, project administration, and then what we call planning and development assistance programs. And I've identified some projects that are within those categories. And unless there are any questions about those, again, I'm just going to keep moving through this. This is something that you've all been through for the most part. Getting into an area that Marshall will beat me on the head if I misstate anything, I'm sure. But the financial assumptions that drive this plan are important to understand. The frozen base, for example, is eighty-six million dollars. That's the base that's established that then every bit of our tax increment is based upon that, that figure. Our maximum indebtedness is thirty million dollars. And for those of the advisory committee and some of the council members who were at our work session last week, Elaine impressed upon us the need to keep track of that number. That's the amount of money that we can spend over the twenty-five or thirty years of this project on projects. And then also under that, you see some tax increment finance revenue figures that are offered to you in five-year chunks. And you see it doesn't take very long until we have a very significant amount of money in which to do projects. The table on the right-hand side of this half of the screen is the more complete table. It shows the year-by-year projections. The far right-hand column, if you could read that, shows that tax increment finance projections and those estimates. Again, the plan is driven by these estimates. You also, I think, were provided a copy of a letter from Q. One Nguyen, if I'm not butchering her pronunciation of her name, with Western Financial Group. And again, not going into deep detail, but she provides three different ways that we could finance with elevated levels of risk assumed on each of those different scenarios. One being that the Urban Renewal Agency operates as its own bank. It borrows the other, or through the city's full faith and credit obligations. Again, the risk on those is that you then secure that loan with general fund monies if the tax increment financing debt service cannot be met. I think you may have read in the past that the City of Independence got into that kind of a situation some years ago, issued bonds, I think about 2007. We know what happened in 2008 and they found themselves trying to backfill that gap with some, by cutting some librarians. Don't worry, Jenny, we're, we're watching you. Where we are now, we've, we've done quite a bit. This committee, the advisory committees first started meeting in March of 2014. In that time, you may not have thought you were making a lot of progress, but we've done a number of administrative things that I think Elaine Howard had tried to impress upon us that we need to get, get that in order. We have an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Urban Renewal Agency that spells out responsibilities and duties. We've established the McMenville Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee. We've been meeting quite on quite a regular basis, especially the last few weeks. And we have two budgets under our belts. We've budgeted very conservatively in each of those and have been surprised by the, the tax increment proceeds that have been realized. On the project side, Alpine Avenue, we were extremely fortunate with a vote in November of last year to have a, about a $2.1 million project in our lap now to improve Alpine Avenue, or at least a portion of Alpine Avenue. Again, we also met just very recently, last Tuesday evening with Elaine Howard and the Assistant City Manager from the City of Sherwood and the Community Development Director from the City of Albany, who shared their experiences with us about their best practices for managing urban renewal session. And I'd be very curious, because we have not met since then, to hear your reflections on that at some point during the evening. And then finally, we have a small facade improvement grant program that's kicked off. One result of that project is shown in the picture below with the Klein Chevrolet, picture that you see on the side of the Chaos Building downtown. And again, continuing with the where we are now theme, if we peek around the corner a little bit to see what's just ahead of us, I've talked about a couple of things here in terms of future staffing, agency organization. It's my sense that as this organization, this project evolves, it will become more complex. It may require different skill sets than you currently have at your disposal. So that's something we need to keep in, in front of us as we, as we move forward with that. Also, there's the policy question of how much money do you push toward the administration side of the project, knowing that that administration cost counts against your maximum indebtedness? In our current plan, there's a little over a million dollars earmarked for administration of this project over the twenty-five year life of the plan. Right now, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Martha or Marcia, that we are not plugging any administration cost from city staff into that project. In terms of communication, I think Walt hit on that theme earlier, so I won't talk anymore about it this time, but certainly communication. And if I had one critique about myself, there needs to be more and better communication between the various bodies that come in contact with this effort. And we will, we will certainly need to address that. The other things that are on our short, near-term project list would be, again, we've talked a lot about the Alpine Avenue project. We'll get a lot more discussion about that, I'm sure, this evening. And I know the advisory committee has spent a fair amount of time talking about that and their desire to extend the scope of that project, if at all possible. Project priorities, need to come up with some process to identify clearly how those decisions are made and evaluating those. And then finally, the urban renewal plan update, although only a few years old, we didn't foresee that our voters would be so generous in passing the transportation bond. And we have a good number of transportation-related projects in those project lists that we need to probably go back and revisit and possibly shift some of that funding around. Lessons learned, what I took away, and these reflect only my observations, there are probably a longer list from the people that attended the meeting on the past Tuesday. But important to take the, the long view of this process. Again, twenty-five years in length and to be patient with its progress. The administrative procedures I talked about earlier, we continue to work on those, we'll refine those as, as we move forward. Again, I won't go through this at any later greater length than I already have, but again, those were the themes that I remember hearing. And again, if anybody has any reflections on that at this point. One thing I want to leave you with is just a little bit of inspiration as you now move into the conversations about what could be, and I picked a couple of quotes, one from Gloria Steinem and one from Daniel Burnham. And I will let you read those. But wouldn't it be wonderful if that building on the upper right-hand corner someday could be this, if you can imagine Lafayette Avenue in the front and heading back toward Eighth Street on the, on the other side? Bellingham, actually, Bellingham, Washington, you know, on their waterfront. They, if anybody's familiar with that project, I don't know if it ever happened. I know they were taking proposals back in 2012, but even has their name. So with that, I'll, I'll stop and any questions or comments or turn this back to Sue?
Doug, there's a, just a quick question. There is a discrepancy in the frozen base between the report and the spreadsheet we got.
Okay.
Eighty-six, I just wondered if, if, the text is eighty-six million and this is ninety-three million.
The, the plan shows at ninety-three, when the final count was made by the assessor's office, it was certified at eighty-six. So our consultants, what they did is their, their numbers were off by that much.
So the actual is eighty-six?
The actual's eighty-six.
Sheet we got is based on ninety-three?
Correct. And I have not gone back and tried to determine where that error was made. They may have used the 2013-14 assessment, but in fact, we used the 2012-13 assessment.
Okay.
So from people's overview of the strategic landscape just now and from the probably even deeper understanding than, that you have of it, having studied this opportunity for quite some time, and Doug just gave us a pretty nifty but short overview, are there any assumptions that you would take away from where you are now in this landscape? So to put you in the ballpark of what I mean by an assumption, an assumption would be trying to distill some truths out of where you are now. And you might start your statement of an assumption with the phrase, "I don't think anybody here would disagree that." And so what are some of the big findings or, or kind of foundational concepts that, given this landscape, you find yourself faced with or, or gifted with at this point? Martha?
I think everyone would agree that the transportation bond has accelerated the possibilities of urban renewal.
What do others think?
Absolutely. In our, in our project, just to reinforce that concept, because that was on the top of my mind as well, but in our project cost, projections that we've done with Alpine, we're estimating $5.3 million to redo it. And other funding, we left zero. And so we were, we've inherited $2.1 million in other funding that we didn't have otherwise had in our plan. So that's obviously a significant impact on that and provides, I think, a lot of opportunity to accelerate some growth in that area.
So any other assumptions?
I'd like to, to offer one of, that's really, it's personal to me. I don't know if it's shared by, by everyone, but for me, in urban renewal, the, an assumption should be that urban renewal, the purpose of urban renewal is not to finance public services that are, should be otherwise financed with other sources of funding and using urban, using urban renewal money to subsidize city government. My view is, is that urban renewal should be used to enhance the community in terms of its own private development and the development of, of prop, redevelopment of properties that are in need of that, primarily in the private sector, with the ultimate result of enhancing the tax base, which does ultimately help the city and all the other taxing interests. So to me, the, the example of, of independence, which got itself into real trouble, was, was one of the examples of using urban renewal money to build a new city hall, which to me was kind of violating that assumption. And I, and I think, we had a lot of discussion with the council about that during the process of setting up the urban renewal district, but that's one of my assumptions going forward that I think is important.
What do other people think?
I agree.
Sue, I, I have a, a unique opportunity to be on the advisory committee and also in city council. And I, I think Kevin really hit upon something that's, I think, really important. And that is, we have so much trust from a council perspective to the advisory committee. We trust you. We look at each of you and you are passionate and you have experience and you are the working arm of the council. And it was great, Kevin, that you, you shared what you shared because I think, from my perspective on the council, we have trust. We're not working against one another. We are hand in glove. And I, I just wanted to share that, that that goes both ways and both entities know that. But to me, that's an assumption and it's one to get out at the very beginning as we go through this process.
Great. Thanks, Scott.
You know, I, I think one for me, and I don't know if everybody will agree with this, but I think the majority of McMenville citizens trust both the, in forming the urban renewal area, trust both the city and the advisory groups to do what is best for the long-term development of the city. Because I really do feel that the majority of the community does trust us, whereas not an issue that happened in Independence. They, very little trust in their council of the way they form their renewal areas. So I, to me, I think that's very important. I do think we have the trust.
So I, to me, I think that's very important, because I do think we have the trust.
I think one of the reasons we have that trust is the amount of community involvement. You know, Doug's guidance and the other committee members' guidance, we have a lot of different processes where the community can get involved. Marilyn is a champion for that at times when we think we have great ideas, to not forget that we're representing a larger body. And I think we've done a good job, or at least a decent job, of doing that and gaining that trust and not letting anybody's own agenda move anything forward that hasn't been through due process.
Yeah.
I'd just like to echo that. I think it is an assumption that we have the community's trust because we continually earn it, because we involve the community. And we operate under the assumption that as we move through the process, we'll continue to do that, because we know how important it is.
Yeah.
There are no shortcuts.
No, there aren't.
And when we talk about independence, that was a shortcut, because if people knew what was happening, they wouldn't have gone that direction, hopefully.
Other thoughts along this line?
Well, I think one of the things we've talked a lot about all the way through this process is maintaining whatever we do with these plans and with this urban renewal money needs to support the true character of McMinnville. And so there's been a lot of discussion around that. And I think it goes along with really representing the citizens, not like a small faction of the citizens, but really representing what McMinnville is and the projects that are supported by this money, you know? And even down to like the downtown, McMinnville has a character and this new Granary District will have a character of its own and we want it to tie together. So I think there's an assumption that we'll continue to refocus on that and make sure that we're right, we're like capturing that in what we do with this. There we go.
The way I would add to that is to say that the urban renewal process is an integrated process. It's the downtown character as related to the 5th Street corridor, as related to the Granary District, as related to the Gateway District, they're all complementary to one another. And it should be approached on an integrated basis, as opposed to having competition between the Gateway District and the downtown. Each needs to see the benefit to the other of improvements made in both places.
And that's really part of the education process as well. And when you, when you have two districts that will be different but connected and maintain the relationship that you have with, to me, Kelly represents the Granary District and our board represents the downtown. Those relationships, though intangible, are really important to keep and they are of value that we can't, we can't put a value on it. We really need to remember that that's what we're passing along as well.
One thing I've seen is a need, I guess I'm making an assumption, the assumption is that there needs to be the greatest possible coordination and collaboration and planning of utility interests. And I'm not saying there isn't, I'm just saying that we've seen in this process that it's challenging. You've got a water and light department, you've got city streets and sewer, you've got private utilities, there's transportation bond, and knowing who's going to do what, when, and having them happen at the right times and coordinating urban renewal with that is challenging, because it's sometimes reactionary, as Kim can tell you, reactionary to what's going on and not always easy to say, "Well, we're going to do this in this year and this and this year." So I just, I hope that that process is as continuous and collaborative as it can be. Lot of players in it.
Mike, one thing that fosters this, and it goes back to something you said, Jeb, is that, and others have said, not only do we have to foster and feed our existing partnerships, we have to look at every opportunity to create new partnerships where they're warranted and where they're needed. There may be partnerships out there that we've really never considered before that could help us tremendously. So we can't only foster what we have between the MDA and all the different, MURAC and everything else we have and the Granary District and the Northeast Gateway, we have to look at what other new partnerships are out there that we can, that we can grow and foster that we may never have thought about.
That brings up the question about private partnerships. And the meeting we had the other day got me thinking a lot about that, because both of the people we heard from had experiences with private partnerships to different ends. And it seemed to me, the message I got out of that was, private partnerships are, could be a really important part of what happens, but that they need to be creative but solid. And creative partnerships with private enterprise, if you're not used to dealing in that arena, can be thin ice for a governmental entity. And we saw, for Sherwood, they didn't make the best deals all the time. But we saw in Albany, she said, you know, "You've got something to offer and you need to go to the table and get what you need." She knew how to do it. So I just hope we move forward knowing we have something to offer, we need private partnerships, we go open-minded to the table to try to get what we need, but we do so in a smart way, knowing what we're doing, getting the help we need and doing it right.
And contracting well.
We can do it.
Foundational assumptions that will perhaps inform your discussion about the options.
Doug, listen, I don't know if it's really an assumption or not, it should be, but the assumption is, however we move forward in the next five, 10, 20, 25 years, I think the assumption has to be made is, from an oversight and a implementation standpoint, we don't have the staff with the resources and education we have now to pull this off. I think Doug gives it more than I could ever imagine, given his staff, but we don't have some of that staff that we're going to probably need to do what we need to do.
Well, we've seen those that have been very successful, being able to bring in business development experts, a whole cadre of skills and abilities to a point where it really drives, helps drive the process.
I think to reinforce his point is, you know, something can work at a level where you've got a lot of people here that have been here for decades driving this process and ultimately, there's going to be changes and new people are going to come on board. I think any, any, any project of this type, you know, is at risk from changes in leadership. Doug's not going to be here forever, he's got places he wants to go. So, you know, we have a pretty strong leadership and now in a lot of ways, not to say we couldn't pick up the ball where we need to, but I think having that key, that key lynch person is something that will be needed at some point to kind of make sure that as people and counselors come and go and other community members come and go, that this process isn't stalled or misdirected, because this is a pretty powerful tool. And I think just the organization of it, long-term, needs to be thought out on the front side, which we've done, obviously, some planning for that.
Yeah, and Elaine had even emphasized in that meeting how critical it is to have that core person like Kate was, to be able to really carry it through.
To kind of reflect on another entity in McMinnville where we did this through economic development, Cassie, you were involved in that, was with me as well. And the foundation of it, we started out as a subcommittee of a chamber and worked into a partnership of, of community members that were interested from different positions and ultimately worked toward an organization that could fund a person. And we saw that organization change, not overnight, but literally almost overnight, when we hired Jody Christiansen. And so we went from being a very reactionary entity, covering the bases, so to speak, and doing things, but once we implemented that key person, that organization expanded greatly. I see this entity at some point in the future, I don't know how many years that is, having, having a key person that has dedicated time, because we're going to identify projects and we're going to find partnerships. And there's going to be a lot of work to do.
It would be nice to get some clarity from the council, though, as to whether you see this being purely the city, is it under planning, is it economic development, is it partly private? I don't, I don't know how you see this functioning at all.
I can tell you, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I think from an administrative overview, compliance issue, if you take the cities that I know that have been successful, the Redmonds, the Madresses, the Pendletons, they found out they were successful by actually having the lead person was part of their city's planning or economic development staff, and then they were the key person that knew all the urban renewal stuff, that actually then worked with all the groups, because they had those, they had those skills. There's a lot of those skills overlapping several different, several different areas.
Marilyn, we've had an opportunity, just to get back from our League of Cities Conference, and had an opportunity to go to, some of us to Madras and to Redmond, and go into the office, walk the city to see how critical that person is. Because what they're able to do is they're able to, kind of the synergies of bringing knowledge and, and it, there can be, there can be some grants, there's all kinds of things that we're not even utilizing today, the way they ought to. And there's a, there's a group of individuals out there that I think are growing their expertise and that's what we need to take a look at.
And if I could just add, and I think that's one of the discussion topics as, as we figure out what is the next steps that you should pursue, that will help educate us on when to get that hire. If it's more standard infrastructure road things, then we may be able to do more of that internal to the city. If it becomes more private partnerships, that's where I think if you let the city bureaucracy, how we think does not translate to a quality hire. That's why I would think that going out and really develop, getting that individual to target it and really get that expertise would just be so valuable. But I think the timing on the hire will be very dependent on the, how you tee up the projects.
Sure, understood.
And I would add to that, that I think that it will probably evolve. It will probably evolve from infrastructure-heavy at the outset, stimulated by the road bond, and will evolve towards the follow-up development projects that come about as a result of those infrastructure projects that require a lot more skill in the negotiation of development agreements with private investors and the kinds of controls and interactions that take place. But, and that probably also happens at the same time that the TIF revenues tend to start to gain ground and enable you to afford
That's probably very true.
the professional assistance, probably as that infrastructure leg tends to, tends to run its course during the first five to seven years.
Well, we got some input at our meeting the other day from Albany, at what level and when they felt they needed to do it. And she, I can't remember the gal from Albany, but she said she couldn't have done this without having that dedicated position and support. And then she had to even grow it.
And didn't she say that she came in at about a million? Yeah.
The other thing, just listening to the assumptions here, the input we got from the city of Sherwood was, to me, very illustrative of two assumptions. One, trust issue. There, they had conflict between the urban renewal board and the advisory committee and that relationship was dysfunctional, didn't, wasn't effective. And second, they didn't have competent staff that were assigned to lead that process and they ended up spinning their wheels as a result of that. So that was where warnings
Yeah.
that we were given last week, that to me, goes straight to two of those very important aspects, which is staff and trust.
And the importance of getting your systems down before it ramps, like getting your, like we've, we're talking about tonight, and the communication between the board, how you make decisions, all of the key processes that are going to be really critical as we ramp up, as we have more bigger projects. You don't want those systems of functioning to break down at that point. So the early years are so important.
Even something as simple as each little project, the very first project, you should get a report, there should be a standard report form that comes. This is what we did, this is what it cost, and, you know, every single thing we do, so that there is a process and a form and
Exactly.
Well, we're starting to get into some of the things we're going to talk about later. So maybe we could hold the conversation here unless somebody's got another just aha, one of those, I don't think anybody disagrees that, that you want to see as part of the record of the meeting and part of your guiding principles. Well, hearing none, let's get into the part of the meeting where we're looking at the alternatives. So, again, Walt, I think we're going to put you on the spot here. I, I hope this isn't the first time, minute you're hearing about this this time.
Win it, Walt.
Tell me it's not, Walt.
Well, I think it's, it's no surprise that in the last six months, the, the road bond and the advent of the planning and engineering process that's, that's come about through the city, not through, not through MURAC, has, has focused the committee upon its first project under the plan as adopted. And that first project on the list of projects that I, I saw put up on the board here before the meeting was the Alpine Project. And that was originally budgeted somewhere around five to seven million dollars and, and was thought about as occurring in phases, because the urban renewal district would not be able to fund all the project early on. However, in the process of setting up the urban renewal district, the consultant to the city, I think voiced her opinion, she voiced it last week to me again, that, that the, the biggest potential that the urban renewal district has to see, to see a result in the form of jobs and multiple use facilities and redevelopment of properties is, is in the Northeast Gateway area, along the Alpine corridor, that, that anything that can be done to enhance that project will make it possible to generate revenues that make other projects more feasible sooner. And so it just adds oomph to your project. The committee, I think it's fair to say, has focused pretty, pretty much with the kind of a laser focus over the last six months on that project, as the consultants have come and met with us two or three or four times. And we've had community outreach meetings to go over concepts and design alternatives and so forth. But the, the issue that's going to come to the council fairly soon, over the next few months, is does the, does the council want to take and, and turn a three-block project that's probably fundable through the road bond into a four and a half or five-block project that's fundable through the road bond and the, and the urban renewal district? If that is seen as desirable, and I think the committee, at least at this juncture, views that it is desirable, then it will require looking at financial feasibility and at what, how much financing can the city and the urban renewal district generate at, within the next year? Because construction really is a year off. So we're looking at not today, but a year from now, what can the urban renewal district do in terms of TIF revenues to help, to help service debt? And so that, I think that it's fair to say that the committee has voted informally several times to recommend to the council that, that, that the city do what it can to enhance the Alpine project and, and, and see what can be done to turn that from a three to a five-block project, if at all possible. Second, I think that the committee is looking at and starting to receive information about 5th Street, because the 5th Street intertie with the Granary District is the route from downtown to Alpine Street. And it's, it's a very critical project and it's happening simultaneously in design with the Alpine Street project. It's not happening sequentially, it's happening simultaneously. It's the same engineering firm. So whether or not the urban renewal district should be also contributing to that project, because quite frankly, the road bond probably will pay for streets and and sidewalks and maybe some infrastructure underneath the street that needs redoing. But it probably won't pay for the frills like historic lighting and maybe benches and amenities that you want to encourage pedestrians to use Fifth Street and make it a lovely street to transition from Third Street to the Granary District. So what can, what level of support can the Urban Renewal District provide? I think the committee's interested in exploring that. We haven't had a chance to get into that. We haven't had any feedback yet from professional staff yet. We haven't seen a design yet for Fifth Street. But I think that's coming in the coming months. And we're about to get into that. And so that's going to come to the council. So whether or not the city can figure out a way to finance $2 million as opposed to one and a half to, in order to enhance the Fifth Street project and maybe start something downtown at the same time, these are considerations that I think the committee is interested in exploring. And I think that the focus has been primarily on Alpine to this point. But I think the focus is beginning to broaden and to shift as, because we're kind of being forced by events to...
I'd almost take that past Fifth and take, look at the entirety of the downtown improvements in the transportation bond. Because a lot of that had urban renewal implications.
Correct.
To look at all of that and say, well, where? Don't you say, oh, we don't have to pay that out of urban renewal now because it's in the transportation bond? Where might it be really appropriately augmented?
I think a couple of issues that Walt bring up, I think, are very valid. I've had everybody come to me, or a lot of people come to me and say, the Fifth Street is an ideal inner tie between the downtown area and the Granary District. I've also had people come to me and say, Third Street to Irvine with the old Railroad Depot, with what's across the street, the potential of Third and Galloway, that maybe it should just be an elf all the way down to Irvine Street and then up past Alitham Chambers. Right, and so you're looking at Buchanan right at the Granary District, and that should be... But I think those are the kind of design decisions as we're talking about now, a transportation bond and about the Urban Renewal area and about the Northeast Gateway area. How does that really lay out? And I think that's going to be a tough decision because they both have their merits. I think that's going to be a real tough decision.
Do any of the committee members want to make any other comments or add anything to that really concise overlay that Walt just gave?
Do you have more, Walt? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, please.
No, no, no.
I'll talk too much.
I butt it on you.
Yes, he?
Well, we, as you might guess, this is a big conversation for us, too, is what is that? What is that? How will the traffic flow? What is the best pedestrian-friendly way to flow between the downtown and the Granary District? And I think that we, that's yet to be seen. And I think you're exactly right, that we'll have to weigh both of those. But it's very exciting to think about people being able to walk between those two districts and know where they're going and know what they'll see. And that there will be very exciting things going on in both places.
Well, you even talk a little bit about the enhancement of Fifth Street becoming more of a thoroughfare. How do you get across Fifth Street from the downtown area if we've been real successful in making that a major thoroughfare? How do you get across? And right now, to get into the Granary District is a little hole. You know, how do you know even where to go to get to the Granary? It's over that direction, and you're walking blocks around. And so the identity of how to get through, how to get from Third to the Granary District and to Alpine, given the fact that we're trying to alleviate some of that traffic off of Third to put on Fifth to equal, you know, whether it be Second or Fifth or whatever it may be, we're trying to equalize a little bit of that downtown.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about when we were having discussions with our initial design team that was looking, we were looking at for the Alpine project is they were not the initial design team that was kind of slated for the Fifth Street. We made that argument, that here we are going to create this thoroughfare, and we're going to need to make this connection. And so they are fortunately working on both those projects to help make that. And I think they have some good ideas they're working on. Just to kind of talk a little bit, not beat transportation to death, but when I look at our project list, and two of the top five projects are both being, partially funded through transportation funds, making that connection to Third Street has been, I think, aside from street improvements, has been the biggest challenge that we're trying to figure out how to make. The Granary District does not have a public right-of-way through it. There's, with the design of Fifth Street, and our preliminary designs are on Mike Bisson's desk, I saw them today. They, you know, there is some challenge there with not having a connection to Alpine. And I can tell you from personal experience in the Granary District development, that flow and that connection to and from downtown is going to be important for development, future development that we want to see in the Alpine or that I think can't happen in the Alpine District to generate tax increments. It also brings up the potential, and I think all this is being really accelerated more than we all probably even realize. But there's a lot of potential for these public-private partnerships. And the Granary District isn't outside of the realm of possibility of one of those, to make that connection. Scott, you mentioned that, you know, our little alleyway that we throw, during crush, we throw the fence up and screw people over. And, you know, there's design work that could be done around that that we could work on to make some more permanent connections. And I think, you know, monuments and signage and things and historical perspective to, you know, so people do know kind of how to make that connection, whether it's down Irvine or some other street, I think are things that we should look at in Urban Renewal alternative funding.
I think as Mayor and Representative Council, one of my fears, and this has always been a fear, I think what we're, we're just really kind of on the edge of doing something really big, really something really important. But yet, if anybody that's traveled Lafayette Avenue knows what Lafayette Avenue is, at 3:00 in the afternoon or 4:00, you're backed up to A Street. If we're not real careful, and that's why I think this is an ideal time to tie them together, do we take then, are we, even though we have the best intentions, are we forcing a lot of the east-west traffic all the way back to Eighth Street? Especially the westbound, where A Street isn't designed to take that kind of traffic because it's a residential street? Or are we forcing some back down to Third Street? Because we're making Fifth Street now not serve up to what it does. And so I think when we look at the design of Fifth Street and how it ties in with the Urban Renewal and how it ties in, we have to expand that and look at, okay, what effect it's going to have on the streets surround... We just put a lot of money into Eighth Street? It wouldn't take long to pull A Street apart with a lot of truck traffic and a lot of car traffic that it isn't carrying right now. And how do we solve those residents? Because that's strictly a residential area.
Before I asked Doug to come up and talk about the other projects that you have in your mix, does anybody want to make any other comments just about the Alpine Avenue project that Walt sketched out in there?
I had one more thought, but when Kelly was talking, there really are, there's, we focus a lot on pedestrian traffic and what the route is to get to Alpine for pedestrians. But when Kelly said there's really no public right-of-way through the Granary District, we really have to think about also how vehicles will naturally get there in a way that it makes it feel connected for somebody who wants to go to different parts of downtown in a vehicle and not on foot. And I'd never made that distinction until you said that. Because even if we route the pedestrian route through that, you know, kind of natural area, it doesn't make sense to route, it's not a public right-of-way. It doesn't make sense to have. So just really thinking about that, too, with regards to the projects that we do. It should be connected for somebody that's driving as well.
In the early designs and the early drawings of the area and some of those original ideas that were up, I remember really clearly that there was inclusion in the Urban Renewal District of very little green space, which I remember kind of saying, I think we should include more green space early on. But the one place where there was a lot of green space was in a conversation about trying to forge some sort of public-private partnership with the railroad and put a linear, a linear parkway along the railroad, which would accommodate both pedestrian and bike traffic and would allow for multiple points of entrance into the Granary District. And a statement and a question at the same time. Is that totally off the table as a point of conversation?
It's certainly not, right now, part of the Alpine design project, which is a road project and is funded as such. But no, it's not off the table in terms of us talking about it because it comes up repeatedly as one of those things that the gateway master plan calls for.
Right.
That is a goal, to make it livable and desirable for pedestrian and bike and multiple use, not just business.
That's where the urban renewal dollars could come in if we see that as being more of the gateway for the pedestrian coming down from Third Street, and we can make that safe and uplifted and... That could be. But we can't use transportation funds to do that, as you said, because it's not the infrastructure of what we're trying to do with transportation.
One of the things I told a couple of committee members, Scott being one of them, where we're been is, and I guess, if we look at anything, you know, if we look at the existing Alpine Avenue, and I think that is number one, that floats to the top. I'm really currently concerned, and this is more of a concern or a fear, it's not that it's warranted, I don't know, is that if we go from Seventh to Tenth Street, and given the current tenants along Alpine on the west side between Eighth and Tenth, and if we don't go to at least 12th Street and add two more blocks to it, we have a lot of property in there that, and Marilyn talked about the piecemeal. I don't know if it would happen in two years, 10 years. But I think if we have the money, I would have liked to at least see a couple extra blocks of Alpine Avenue done, so we can get a bigger bang and get that to redevelop. Because currently, there's not going to be a lot of redevelopment between Seventh Street and Tenth Street. There's not a lot to redevelop, so...
So let me, before we start to get into the pros and cons, Doug, did you, am I putting you on the spot here?
Yes, you are. But we love to.
I certainly can't do it.
That's all right. Well, I probably should come up to this. Allow me. I think the conversation is right on point that I've heard so far tonight. I guess if I had any voice in this, I would say, let's finish the conversation around the Alpine and Fifth Avenue project. Let's put that to bed. Let's let the transportation improvements work out. Let's take a time to review those and see how they're functioning. Come back and modify the little bits and pieces of those that don't work. What I would then do is suggest that we revisit the funding scheme that's in your current plan, see where there's opportunities to shift those funds. Because we do have funds that are now not earmarked for any particular project. Let's find the next catalyst project. We have the north end of Alpine. We have a couple of vacant properties and developed properties that are on the market that would make, in my opinion, great private-public partnerships with the right vision, right people involved. And then finally, what I want to make sure that we always keep in mind is that we have enough reserve or capacity in our system, and that means staff and financing, to take care of the unanticipated opportunities that might come our way. Don't leverage or look everything that you have. Those would be my three pieces of advice, I guess, moving forward.
Yeah, case in point on his comment, and Doug's comment about anticipating things. You don't know where the next opportunity is going to come from. As we all know, working with railroads can be quite difficult. But I think that vision for that pathway, and it's funny that you brought that up because I parked on the crossing this morning and looked at where the two spurs join into one and then eventually down, to kind of see what the width was there. But not to get too far off track. The McDaniel family tried to buy the Southern Pacific property that they were leasing, quite a big chunk, actually, of what is now the Granary District, for a couple of generations, and couldn't do it. I just happened to fall in the picture at a time when Southern Pacific was getting rid of some land and getting ready to sell the Union Pacific, which we didn't know about at the time. And went to San Francisco, met with their property manager, and they sold me the property. And there was, it was almost two acres worth of property that was being leased that wasn't owned. So having resources available for those opportunities because you don't know when they're going to come, whether it's land acquisition, if you get a developer that comes in on a vacant parcel and says, here's our plan, here's our financing, you know, they're willing to enter into a partnership. It might take some assistance, you know. That's what we heard from Kate Portia down in Albany. So I think we need to keep that in mind and not just spend every last cent we've got to do one certain thing. We need to make sure we can, you know, be ready for the opportunities that come because they will.
Doug, I'm not sure that, I'd like you to clarify a little bit what you said about you'd like to continue the conversation on the Alpine Avenue. So we heard that there was, the project, as it's envisioned, is three and a half blocks, yes?
We don't have estimates yet. We believe it to be about three to four blocks.
Three to four blocks, okay. And then I heard Walt say that if he expanded to a five-block project...
Or six blocks.
Yeah, I would guess right now that funding would probably be closer to three. That's what the transportation plan called for, was about one-third of the entire nine blocks. And so what I talked about was really using urban renewal funds to try at least design it and bid it out for five blocks and see what happens. And then, because you never know, it may be cost-effective, it may be not cost-effective. At that point, you might do the last two blocks as an alternate additive in the bid, right? With urban renewal money being the, kind of the wild card. So yes, I, in my own minds, I envision in a five-block project as opposed to a three-block project, if it's feasible and possible, without forestalling all other options, you know, that you might want to be undertaking at the same time.
So would you describe that as the direction that the committee has been taking? That's kind of the place where you've ended up? Maybe not the direction you've taken, but where you are in your thinking.
I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, I think our common sense assumption here that the committee's been working on is that if they're already doing this project and they're already, you know, we've already got design teams and so many things that you would have to just go out and re-engage to start this process. If we could tag on a couple more blocks to that, you know, we haven't bid it out, we don't know. But there's got to be, common sense would say there's got to be some savings to be had there. I mean, this group is looking for leverage. We're looking to leverage resources that we've got. And this might be an opportunity to extend that, those infrastructure improvements a little bit further at a time when we've, you know, we've got some resources. And I think that's the assumption that the committee has been working towards in making that a priority for our group and ultimately working with city council or for the board with the board.
Just to be clear, Walt, would you say two more blocks, do you mean from, there's blocks and there's blocks there? You know, there's really six blocks by numbered streets total. So Tenth to Eleventh, is that the two blocks you're talking about? It's a big...
And there's Eleventh Street.
Basically, you've got Seventh to Eighth, Seventh to Tenth. Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth are the three blocks. Tenth and Eleventh are the fourth and fifth blocks that you'd be talking about.
From Seventh to Eighth to Ninth is two blocks. The Tenth is three.
Right.
Two, Eleventh would be four.
And there's Eleventh and Eleventh Avenue, which is where we walk down to, which is five.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, that Tenth to Eleventh is really twice as far as from Ninth to Tenth.
Yes.
I don't need to say that.
I think that the mayor made a very good point. And that is that if you look at the Union, excuse me, at the Alpine area, the developable, the most developable property is not in the first two or three blocks. It's in blocks four and five. And so you miss an opportunity if you don't take it that far, if you can, at the outset. Because that's where some of the partnerships may come in, is along that improved right-of-way.
And the way, the reason I like that, because Eleventh Way, which is actually the fifth block, is the natural braking point where Lafayette Avenue connects to Alpine Street from Tenth Street. Eleventh Way is the next, so if it went up to Eleventh Way, we're stopping at a natural braking.
Let me ask this thing. Because if you go with that assumption and the desire is to, first off, use the first bond money or the loan money, or whichever, however we're going to do it, to extend two blocks, is there anything left to discuss after that, Doug?
We haven't written the numbers, to be honest with you, at this point. We don't have the engineer estimates, for example, in design. So we don't have a base to even make that.
Any thoughts in roundabout world? Any thoughts in roundabout world?
Roundabout world, the last estimate was about seven million dollars for the entire project.
Okay.
This is 2.1. Half would probably get us there, about three blocks. It really depends, again, when we start adding amenities and ornaments to the tree on this design too, if we were just doing a standard street section, that's one cost. We're doing a different design, a little bit out of the box. We don't have, um, great numbers at this point. We may have some as early as tomorrow. We're going to be meeting with consultants tomorrow afternoon on some 30% drawings, so that might get closer. I guess that's my, circle back, that's, that's the point I was trying to make, the first, my first point is, let's close up the, this conversation on Alpine Avenue, get direction from the, from the Urban Renewal Agency Board to council. And then we'll have direction as to proceed. And along that path, there are benchmarks or stop and go points on that, on that path.
But the first, completing those two blocks, was it, you said it was, um, between a million and two million, rough estimate?
Uh, total Project Seven, what we have in the transportation block is about 2.1.
So add another two, rough about?
Yeah, another two, yeah.
So, for a while, that would be the first, that, that will be your monies that would go into urban renewal. And so it does give us more decision space for those other things, if, if you so choose.
Yeah, I haven't looked at my amortization table to see what, 1.5 million over 20 years and what the payment is. That's way beyond my usual.
Portia's got it figured out already.
I have looked at that, and it's about 110,000.
Yeah, and we got 5 million for 4.35.
Yeah, and so, it, it, it really depends on how much you borrow at the outset, and of course, the, when you look at the transportation budget, they, the, the, the actual construction budget for three blocks was 1.7 million. Uh, you're going to have some augmented expenses for additional engineering and some of the additional augmentation of there, of just the street. Uh, so the question of whether you would spend another million or whether you'd spend another million and a half or two million will depend on, well, okay, how much financing do you want to try and go out for at your, at your first phase? Or do you, do you do it in chunks? And, uh, and, and if so, how much can you do a year from now? Right now, you could probably do a million and a half at, on, at 4%.
And, and Walt, you know, we, we've been looking at those first couple of blocks as festival with, with, with very unique.
Yeah.
Pieces to it, if, as we go down.
Next two blocks are the craftsmen.
Right, and so that may look a little different. So maybe a million will get us there, which maybe leaves us a half a million for Fifth and Third, having a little projects.
Consultants have to weigh in on that.
Hey, Doug, is the number that you got, um, for the full street, just the, uh, typical street?
No.
It's for the festival, like?
Right, it was, it was a number provided by Murray Smith and Associates.
Okay, good.
That would help set up the, the amount for the bond measure.
Okay.
So let me see if I understand what the, where the committee's ended up. It is that there's potentially an economy to scale and there's some more waiting public-private partnership opportunities if we go that additional increment past just those first two or three blocks, three blocks on Alpine Avenue. But we understand that we'll have to estimate the funds available and understand the city's appetite for, uh, risk, I guess, it would be.
And I would say our appetite. There's, there's going to have to be things that, it's going to have to be, um, kind of a lock, you can only do so much at the beginning because you only got so much money. So parking, maybe not. What is it that's got to be upfront because we won't be able to do all of them for a rather? We will get to them, but it'll be, it's going to take a while. It's going to take, it's going to take years.
Okay, so then I can amend that.
The patience part.
I could amend that, then there would have to be some deferred gratification on some.
That's a great way to start our, our project.
It's really in the nature of urban renewal.
As they said, patience, patience.
Patience, patience.
Um, so, uh, council, other council members, what are your thoughts? And I think we've heard the case for the, the longer Alpine Avenue project. Um, do council members have a case in their mind for another alternative?
Now, I support that. I think if we can, we can leverage the bond money to do more there, I think that'll just speed up the, the development over there and make our tax increment financing dollars come in quicker. Um, I, I, I fear that if we, uh, don't take advantage of this, that there'll be this undeveloped section that, especially when it comes to the infrastructure part of it, that could take a greater amount of time to get us to the point where we're actually seeing an increase in, in taxable, uh, improvements to that area. So I'm, I'm definitely supportive of, if it's feasible, to go as far as we possibly can and to make those investments now.
Mary, what's your take? I mean, you, you don't have to weigh, I'm not asking council members to weigh in about how they would vote on this at some date in the future, but just taking your pulse on this right now.
Could I just add also, I, I completely am, I can agree with what Remy said about making, there needs to be a priority set for the foot traffic from, from point A to point B. I think not doing that could get us in, without having that, that idea as a, as a priority could really get us in trouble. Uh, otherwise, it's going to feel, people are going to feel unsafe to make that transition across Fifth Street, over the tracks, and, and along Lafayette Avenue. They're going to want to drive from point A to point B, and that is just not a feasible option. We're going to get ourselves into a lot of trouble. And as we come up with a solution for this foot traffic, a viable solution there, um, I think a lot hinges on that, and, and I'm a little nervous that we don't have that, a plan, a really good plan for that right now, because we could get our, we could design both sections beautifully without having that bridge. We could cause ourselves a lot of trouble. Sorry.
Go ahead. No problem. Well, I think the committee has done a fantastic job of weighing all the alternatives and, and, uh, and I think that, you know, utilizing the funds properly is key. But, uh, the thought that goes through my mind in this extension of Alpine and the utilities is if, if we want to develop some public, uh, private working agreements, we've got to somehow make it attractive to the private sector. And if there's no utilities, if we don't know when the future utilities are, who wants to establish a, a private venture there? Uh, if they don't know if they're going to have proper facilities and all that in order to run their business or whatever development they want to put in there to its full maximum capacity. So there's that part of it that goes through my mind is, how far do we go? And what are the possibilities of implementing new businesses, structures, or whatever, into that Alpine Street? And what do they need to do that? And we need to somehow, um, make it attractive for them so they come.
Mr. Mayor, any thoughts?
I think my thoughts, I've already given what a lot of my thoughts are. I, as far as we can extend it based on the financing, whether it's one block, two blocks, three blocks, whatever it shows up we can do, that's, we should take on as much of it as we possibly can.
Now, speaking of, of the reserve, then with that, how much do you want left in this reserve? How much opportunity money do you want to have?
To me, that's hard to tell because without knowing three blocks or five blocks, we may look at it and say, that's too much, we're not going to do any of it. But it's, to me, it's hard to tell not knowing what all the other things we might want to keep in there. Is it 10% of the total? Is it a dollar amount of the total? Is it 20% of the total? I guess I'd have to have more figures on what that whole extension would cost before I can make a good guess of how much we want left.
Let me ask you this, in priorities again, how important is having that opportunity money? Does Alpine drive everything and the opportunity money only comes after the extension? How important is opportunity money to you?
There has to be some amount of opportunity.
But how much, I?
And can that opportunity money be, uh, uh, sort of remaining, uh, uh, increment? I mean, remaining, uh, uh, tax increment financing amount? I mean, if so mu, if there's so much tax increment financing that is available for opportunity, can that be converted into a loan at that level? So, I mean, let's say that there's $30,000 a year, could you then borrow on that $30,000 a year level? Because that's the remaining tax increment financing for an opportunity.
And that would be based on how much, like I said, how much debt you want, how much ability you want to be able to pay in. And I'd have to ask those who've done urban renewal before, when you do public-private partnerships is where I think opportunity money plays out the most. When you're offering, I, I don't know how those structures work, if bringing debt into that is, is as equal as cash, I would assume it would be. But that may be something we need to take a look at, um, whether, how other urban renewal projects, now that they've matured and happened, how they did that when they did those public-private? Was it some kind of debt leverage or was it some kind of, you know, direct money inject?
I don't know, that'd be good to know, though.
Yeah.
You know, already you talked about loans that were paid back or forgiven depending upon certain parameters and.
And obviously, that takes cash in upfront, uh, I.
And that's the cash upfront, so you give loans out.
The way I view this is that every year that this plan goes on, you're gaining another 100,000 or more of additional TIF every single year. That, to me, is the opportunity money.
Yeah.
In the early years, you're going to do what you can to kind of stimulate the process and use what you have available to kind of kickstart it if you can. But as you go by each additional year, you're getting another charge of additional funding. And so whether you set aside 50% of that or 60% of that or 20% of that, that's a policy decision for the council ultimately to make. But I, I view it as, it's a, it's a snowball that naturally rolls downhill faster and faster, but you can make it roll faster if you invest strategically at the outset, so.
Yeah.
So that's an assumption, what do other people think about that? I mean, is that a philosophy that others are comfortable with?
Yeah, back to the mayor's point about the opportunities to, for, to, for private investment and, um, others have made the point as well. If we are strategic and we extend it to a point where it makes those properties that have the biggest possibility of increasing our tax base, then our, the amount that we get every year, uh, if that does encourage private investment, then it's going to only help us going forward with getting more revenue.
I'd make a suggestion, the council may want to look at some things that Albany and some others have done, and that is, before you put in all your infrastructure and pay a lot of money, spend some time in getting actual developers involved in what they would request for a certain development in a size and try to go up front and accommodate that public improvement to what they're requesting to locate.
Oh, if you can do that, you're miles ahead, aren't you?
There's a base format laid out within the Northeast Gateway in the zoning overlay that we did with, uh, the Northeast Gateway project that has designated uses for different, a, as you move down Northeast Gateway, there's different design uses. Not that someone couldn't apply for variance, but, um, there's definitely things to consider just within that structure, uh, as far as how the infrastructure serves those and what the, the new uses could be based upon that zoning overlay with the Northeast Gateway. So I think maybe reviewing that as a bad idea as well, to kind of give us an idea of what kind of what we were for, you know, pushing towards or trying, trying to lead and guide to, so.
I appreciate that the, um, that the, uh, suggestion, the advice is, um, to make the most out of the, the funds that are available and, um, I'd say generally, I, uh, I, I support that 100%. Um, uh, I feel like part of the decision, um, or part of the conversation, though, um, there's a, a little cart before the horse. Um, when I came to council meetings, uh, initially to watch the council and listen to council, um, Kevin, you would always talk about parking, and I always thought, God, that guy just talks about parking all the time. It's ridiculous, he always brings up parking. Um, but I have, I've since, uh, come to understand the value, um, of that conversation. And, um, so, uh, not to be redundant with the, the pedestrian pathway or the parking, but in a way for me, um, seeing what some of the plan or some of the conversation is about how parking will be addressed, uh, almost dictates whether or not, uh, the consideration should be made to continue to expand, uh, the street improvements. Um, because if that, if that parking has not been accounted for, if there is no place for, uh, that to, to take place, then, um, uh, then I agree that we could get into a pretty, a pretty sticky spot. Um, and it would be sad not to have said opportunity money because we, it was tied up. Um, and then I think some of the, you know, realities that also, um, we need to kind of talk about the tie-in with that are, um, the, some of the existing structures, existing buildings and existing land prices. Um, so that empty lot that sits between, uh, Eighth and Tenth there, um, or I guess technically Ninth and Tenth, but, yeah, Ninth and Tenth. Um, I believe that that is, the asking price on that is about 350,000 right now, and I do not believe there are any, um, utilities available there. I could be wrong about that.
That's for both lots, isn't it?
Yeah, that's two lots. There is a current alleyway down the middle that, um, with prior ownership of the adjacent lots was not possible to vacate. That, there was a recent change in ownership in one of the structures that, or that may not be, um, as difficult to do, but, you know, there was two separate developed lots with, uh, very definite, uh, city-owned, uh, alley in, in between, so.
That isn't actually platted as, in Oak Park Edition, as Ninth Street?
Ninth Street, yeah.
So I think that, you know, that, uh, needs to be real consideration. Um, you know, uh, we have clearly manufacturers, uh, down there, um, but one of them, the major ones and, and a large employer for our city is R&amp;B Rubber, which, um, has a high volume of employees, um, which requires a lot of parking. And also has a high volume of traffic, uh, of truck traffic, um, which I think, uh, is a, is a real consideration. Um, I feel like I should say, just disclose, um, that, that my business is a neighbor of R&amp;B, and so in no way am I bringing this up in any negative or in any, in, in it, and I'm not bringing it up on a personal or a, a personal business, um, way at all, but in, uh, more as an observer of the heavy truck traffic that does come down that street on a regular basis, um, that comes off of Lafayette, that uses Alpine, that sometimes blocks Alpine. Um, I'm sure you see that as well.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion with that in our design meetings with the traffic engineers about the truck traffic and how it gets not only, uh, R&amp;B Rubber, um, and, but to the Graner District as well and how that Alpine is used. R&amp;B actually crosses Alpine more than they use Alpine, I think, when they come in on, uh, Ninth, Ninth, Tenth?
Tenth, yeah.
Tenth, and then they exit, uh, actually out on the Eighth Street, uh, at the Graner District. One of the things that you brought up, though, I think is important, just, just to say for the record, is that, um, it brings up a good, uh, opportunity to talk about the tie-in and relationship with economic development. Um, having a, a large employer, industrial employer, um, in that, in this, in this urban renewal area, um, you know, some of the things that we're talking about designing are looking out quite a few years. And in no way does it meant to, uh, displace any current employer. Um, as a matter of fact, the street design, um, would actually, um, allow for, uh, existing types of parking uses where people are, you know, it's a curbless design without sidewalks, so you actually have people parking perpendicular, which, um, R&amp;B uses that quite frequently. And so one of their concerns is, you know, what we're doing and how we're doing, and it's part of the educating, uh, the public and, and private sector that, um, some of the design things we're doing actually are to benefit them in how they're utilizing that and not eliminate that, that type of parking in use, so. But I think it brings up a good opportunity because we're in constant contact with that employer, um, because we don't want to lose them out of McMinnville. We don't want them to feel crowded out, uh, because we're looking out 20 years from now and that they continue to grow, they're obviously out of space as it is, uh, you know, what can we do? What can we do about that?
Sure, and, and so even, so with that in mind, and I'm, I'm very glad to hear that that's part of the plan, so even with that, then where would anybody else park?
What's that?
Then, so even with that incorporated.
Where would anybody else park?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, any, any new, any, any new development's going to have parking requirements. And so that's going to have to be within the footprint of, of the existing. Now, does that mean if someone came up with a large project, they wouldn't? I mean, there's always the opportunity for them to come back and say to the Urban Renewal District, hey, we want to make this, you know, 15 million dollar investment in this property. Um, this, the, the land that's available doesn't have enough, uh, parking. Is there other land available? Could urban renewal funds be leveraged to help provide parking for the area? Some discussion like that's theoretical, but could happen. But certainly the parking requirements, there's not, there's not a zero, a zero parking requirement like there is downtown within the Northeast Gateway project. So I would, I would foresee that any future development, they're going to have their own parking requirements.
Originally, there was conversation about parking requirements also being behind the buildings, so to speak.
Off-street, yeah, off-street behind. Alpine would have street front development, zero outline on the front, so, yeah, some of the design work for future development there, yeah, so...
I have a question about, I think it's general consensus that urban renewal money should augment the transportation Alpine development. Are we rushing urban renewal because we have to meet the deadline of the transportation Alpine project or can the transportation Alpine project be, if necessary, pulled back a piece of time to allow for the planning and the financial? I'm not necessarily proponent of that, I'm saying it's not built in stone that that has to be done, but we're...
I would think, you know, we have design architects going underway.
Right, right.
That is the plan. We would have to stop, restart something else.
Well, I mean, the actual, yeah.
Yeah, construction isn't starting.
Not that you'd stop doing that, I just wonder whether or not there's any additional time, whether we have enough time to do all the planning that's necessary to do the Alpine expansion correctly and etc.
It's programmed for construction in 2016 and 2017, so it's, it's a year away in terms of construction. The original urban renewal ban, the, the urban renewal plan...
Construction bids already?
The design review has been bid and left. That's already done in the middle.
Yeah, 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 oh, the engine, as you're aware, the engineering's underway and it's going to move into final design, I think, pretty soon, as my guest, Doug. Well, if they're at thirty percent, they're already moving into it, so...
It sounds like it can, it's just that things have been...
Well, the other thing I would say, Jeff, in that regard, is that the urban renewal plan envisioned Alpine Street starting in 2016. It's actually tracking with the, the plan in terms of timing. Now, I don't know that, I don't know that we're, I don't feel rushed in the process. I think the process has been pretty deliberate so far and it's really ultimately for the council to be comfortable with whatever the consultants ultimately design. But that process seems to be moving forward kind of in a very systematic fashion to me.
Isn't all of this part of what we talked about earlier now that we've got the transportation money in there of going back and reviewing the projects to make sure which ones are, we need to be tracking with again?
Right.
Because it's a moving target.
Right, right, and, and certainly the urban renewal plan review has to be, not get left behind by the road bond projects, so that you fail to have an opportunity that you would otherwise wanted to take advantage of.
Scott, we've heard from the rest of the council on, on this. You play kind of a hybrid role here. So, did you want to weigh in at all just about your thinking at this point?
I, I think my comments have been pretty in line with the advisory, given, given you being a part of that. We're feeling, we're feeling probably a little more comfort than the council because we've been emerged in this, where there for a while, we were almost meeting on a, on a weekly basis with the, the design and, and so we're feeling really good. I, I think it gets to that same point, though, we need to see cost and then when we take a look at those costs and we look at, you know, the stream of dollars and we, we make a determination where we feel the comfort. But I'm, I'm proactive to be moving forward just along with everyone else.
So I think we're going to need a break here in a minute, but I think if I could summarize what I think I've heard is that there's agreement that the case for the extended Alpine Avenue project makes sense, the case makes sense, however, it is likely to or will defer opportunity in other areas. But investment made strategically up front will make the snowball run downhill faster. And I've also heard a lot of concern about getting the horse of really, or the cart of really exciting interest-driving projects too far out ahead of the ability to get people and vehicles safely to and from and parked and all that. So there's some infrastructure pieces that can't get too far out of the timeline. And I think what I've heard is, is council's remarks is this all is sounding good, but we've got factors of cost, how the money will flow in, time and optimum sequencing of events, flow among the districts, debt and risk appetite, parking, there's an alchemy, there's a bunch of balls that have to get in the air and we want to see what they all look like when they're all being juggled together, what's that optimum juggling act we can do among the factors? I think that's what, that's kind of what I've netted out.
You made a good comment. If I was to shorten anything and give up on anything on Alpine Street, and this is just my opinion, I think the opportunity cost, I would give up a block or so of whatever of Alpine Street, you know, and this is from a cap, from my speaking as mayor, because I've always thought the last ten years, we, we achieved downtown exactly what we wanted to. We wanted a vibrant downtown area and we've done it. But as part of that, to attract those businesses downtown, we kind of slacked off our, on our off-street parking requirements. So that was bad enough. Now we have a lot of people coming back downtown, no place to park them. And then I think it was twenty-six parking, general parking spots, we've, more we've lost downtown now due to ADA requirements, which, yeah, they're parked, they're used for ADA, but there's a lot of times you walk down Main Street or Second Street or Sixth Street, they're not used at all. So technically, to me, that rushes the opportunity or what we need to do with parking. Four, twenty-six spots from, from the railroad tracks to Baker Street is a lot of spots that we haven't given up a hundred percent, but we've given up quite a bit of it because if they're not used for handicap parking, they can't be used at all. To me, so I would rather, I think we have much, I think one opportunity cost we have to look at as part of our transportation or urban renewal, I should say, is addressing the parking. We just don't have it, period. And it's, it's starting to get pushed out further into residential developments and further into residential development where you're, and this is a problem I have with, especially with what we do with Alpine. I think now you're even starting to see trucks that are coming off of A Street off R&amp;B Rubber who are not going to Lafayette Avenue because of the time it takes to get onto Lafayette Avenue, they're taking a ride and going down all the way down A Street to Baker Street. That's tearing up a street we just redid. What do you tell those residents that live in a residential neighborhood that have trucks going by them all the time? I don't know, so I think the parking issue is a big, and in Remy's area too, I think the parking issue is a big issue. So...
So, yeah, I mean, I guess to summarize it even shorter than this, I guess what I've heard is this, where did you say it? This would be, if I was going to, you know, say go on something, it would probably be that additional increment on Alpine Avenue, but we need to understand it within the context of, of everything else. And I don't know, that, I don't know how much of a plan update or how much of a consultant lift that is, Doug. I mean, how long does it take to, to net out, to really understand the implications in all of those dimensions? Cost and revenue and parking and transition among districts, I mean, how long, what's the timeframe on really understanding the context for making the decisions?
It is a topic of a conversation laptop outside of this meeting tonight for sure. That'll be part of our continuing dialogue. I don't have an answer for it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a small task. We'll take resources, but we've got great minds on this table, I think, that'll help with that conversation. If that's the direction of the council, let's focus on that.
From my own awareness, when in the project, because we're going to have about two years where we already have, you know, construction going on on Alpine, any idea when in that process we lose, start, start losing some of the synergies of being able to add on to Alpine? Just to give, you know, is our decision window here a year, eighteen months, twenty-four months? Any wild wag?
Wild wag is that I don't know that it's, it's time-sensitive, to be honest.
Okay.
I think what we're trying to announce is capitalize on the economy of scale that we have going with an engineer in contract, that's, that's the benefits going now, immediate benefit. I don't know that we can sit here today with, with some candor and say that it's going to create this much additional bump in tax income revenue with one more block or two more blocks. That analysis hasn't been done and I'm not sure we should be spending a lot of money on that to get that done.
No, I'm just wondering, when do we lose the option to, you know, when they combine the engineering, when they do those things in the planning stages where we can save money because, you know, they're already doing it for the first part of Alpine, it would just be a simple, it'd be, it'd be a monies because they would also just look, they're already there, they would start to looking at the extension.
Doug, maybe we just pose that question to our group tomorrow?
Yeah.
We've got, we've got the team.
They're not far from that point.
We've got three staff booked out for five years and it was current plan. I mean, we killed this and the Hill Road, full share of the road, First and Second Street, the Baker, Scotland, the Bay, the Friday, the summer. This project, Alpine, will be breaking ground in spring of this coming year.
Yeah, they need to know fairly soon if they're designing three or five blocks.
The last timeline they proposed was construction starting July.
So it speaks to your point a little bit. So let's take a break. Let's, let's do ten minutes so we'll be back at...
The thirteen.
The after, I bet.
Start construction.
And after eight on my clock, everybody else? And then, let's just focus, kind of, to talk about the...
Go, Sue!
Thank you. Okay, Sue's little... Don't ever think of it.
Connection.
They made me do it.
I'm having time.
We'll get Sue back up here.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted one to be on the whole street.
I guess we're done.
Right, because it's all about me. Batteries, but it's just, it's just... Right, but what about Pavlov? So I didn't mean to put words into counsel now, trying to summarize where we ended up. So just as feedback to the committee, I think council's heard where they're coming from. And obviously, this isn't a decision-making meeting, but do council members have any questions you want to ask the committee or anything you want to add just in terms of giving feedback on what you've heard? And to bring this back, this particular page back, these are some summary points from what I've heard in terms of feedback.
I, I'd like to clarify and just make sure that I'm kind of on the same page. You know, as we've, as we've talked to the engineers and the architects, you know, we talk about parking a little bit, but they, they envision this being a much more walking area. That's the intent in the long run, but this to be, we, we have to provide transportation for automobiles and trucks. I mean, it's a mixed-use street. But their, their vision for this is a lot more walking and kind of that's, that's the festival and, and walking to this as a destination, as a part of the experience that you have in McMinnville. And I don't know that in some of the conversations, everybody was so concerned about traffic, but they tried to help ease us into that this is, this is intended to be a different area than the typical street that we would see in McMinnville. So, you know, those are just words, okay? But again, they, they were at least able to ease our minds a little bit of what is trying to be created and show us examples of other areas that have been very successful in accomplishing that. So I thought I'd throw that out.
Yeah, Scott, I think that's a good point and I, I will kind of address what my feelings on that is. I think you're exactly right. All the development we looked at, it is meant to be a walking area with few parking for loading, unloading. But my concern is, is the people that are going to walk that area, whether they're from out of town or wherever, they're going to have to park someplace in order to walk that area. Where do they park in order to walk that area? And that's my, that's my concern. Are they going to bleed over into the residential neighborhoods, you know, so where are they going to park? And so I think from a parking perspective, I think that was my feeling that, yes, I think everybody will agree that it is a festival-type street. It's mainly for a walking experience, but those people have to park someplace to walk to it.
We see a fair amount of that now in the Graner District, you know, it's a kind of a big open asphalt ocean right now, very unstructured parking. We get a lot of walking traffic to and from downtown. I think in this design, we see, we were seeing, we were seeing that when we were out on our walk and when they're taking pictures, we're seeing people walking through districts. I think the one thing that we really have been trying to emphasize and correct me if I'm wrong, is that once they find a spot, we don't want them to have to move around. We want them to be able to connect and make the connections. When we did the Northeast Gateway study, they did overlays of circles. It was a quarter mile, so that connection from downtown to the Graner District fit that and then the Graner District kind of serves as the next launching pad into the Northeast Gateway. So if we can get people to park downtown, stay in town a little longer, explore, support more businesses, more collaboration with downtown in that, in our area and how we can make those connections so they're more pedestrian-friendly, then once they get, once they get to that spot and we work strategically with partnerships to create some of that and new development, I think we'll see that, that work and I think parking will fit, it will be, you know, it will fit into that process.
I agree with everything you say, Kelly. My concern is if there's no parking downtown now...
They won't come downtown.
Where's all these people going to go?
Right, yeah.
To walk it.
And understanding that this is a vision down the road and today we have accustomed to be able to park on Alpine wherever you want. And, and so there's going to be a lot of, you know, people that are accustomed to having that, that's a takeaway from them and we're not where we, you know, we're beginning with the end in mind, but to get where we need to be is going to be some heartache.
So before we close this section out, I don't know, Kevin or Larry or Remy, do you have any other feedback that you want to give the committee about what you've heard? I mean, I think you've already done so. This is kind of the last call for tonight.
I think that, kind of restate what I said initially, it's just that I do think the, the work that's been done is really impressive and I'm very grateful to everybody that's served on the committee and, and staff and committee members alike, so honestly say thank you for all of that, all of that work and I look forward to seeing what happens.
I'll say one thing, just knowing the council, I, I think we'll have some really good discussions, but we're going to want some numbers. We're going to want to take a look at some of those final things that Walt, you were talking about. We're that kind of council. Give us the hard stuff and then we'll make a determination from that where our comfort level might lie.
Yeah.
And now, to get to that, though, because I've heard that a couple of different times about we need the numbers. The process to get to that, Doug, because that's mean staff, is this the issue where we need to talk about, do we need to apply some funds to the, the current design efforts ongoing with the Alpine Avenue? Do we need to talk about additional funds for that to get those numbers or how do we get those numbers? How do we get decision data?
The numbers require a design. The design is not done yet, so it, there is a, there's a process. We have to be patient until that design is at a point where we can do some, at least back the envelope of numbers and estimates. Once we have that number, which will occur later this fall, early winter, we can then start to apply that to the ground and say, well, a million will buy us two blocks, stand to reason that a million will buy us two more blocks. Then we can turn to our friends in the financial world and say, what is the cost to us to get a one million dollar loan, have every ratio, do everything else in place to make that happen? I'll bring that question and package if we'll go back to our urban renewal for, for discussion and decision to move forward.
Can we get a, say, January before the goal session for the council or would you anticipate that, you know, that'll come sometime afterwards?
I wish I could tell you, I just know we're having a 30% drawing discussion now, whether that's enough to do an estimate which we could go out with some confidence and bond. I'm just not feeling real warm and fuzzy right now with that. January seemed a reasonable time. But I didn't mean that tonight with not knowing all the information we get.
Okay. Let's transition to our last agenda item. So, I heard Walt say, you know, we need some of the basics, a basic understanding of how our relationship here works with the Urban Renewal Board. And are we meeting, when are we meeting like this? Is it going to be once a year, twice a year, quarterly? When do you want to meet with us and talk with us? What council do you want in terms of reporting from us? What are the bones of the relationship? I don't know, Walt, would you add any other questions to that list?
I think you hit it pretty well there. I mean, I, let me just say, I think quarterly meetings of this type is too much. I'm not sure that biannual is too much, given in the early years and how much, how many decision points there are along the way. I'm not sure that biannual joint meetings aren't a good idea. I think it's important for the council to get feedback from the committee and the committee to get feedback from the council and this is a great way to do it. This has been terrific tonight.
Let me share also that on a monthly basis, I take a report back to the council along with Doug. So we'll do a brief overview of committees that we're on and where we're at. It's not real in-depth, but it does share with council where we are and what we're doing at that particular time. Sometimes if a council meeting runs long, then we bypass that and then, you know, you're two weeks down and then you move past that a bit. But I want, each member of the council that's on a committee has an opportunity to update so the council somewhat has a working feeling for what's going on. But I would submit personally from my perspective, absolutely this type of a format twice a year. I'm feeling really comfortable and setting it like this, we start at a time and we go as long as needed. And even if it does interrupt our council meeting a little bit, so be it, we'll do what we need to do.
I agree exactly, Scott, I think quarterly is too often. I think biannual, twice a year is great. I think we're moving so fast, is there a potential that certain issues may come up that may require an hour, an hour and a half meeting someplace? But if there is, you schedule it when it's needed. But to schedule quarterly, I think with everything the committee has to do and they're working on, everything the council has to do and they're working on, I think quarterly meetings is just.
And then I'll throw out, just as we have in any committee assignments, these, the committee meets on a monthly basis, just as the committees that you guys are on. And if you ever have a desire, it's an open meeting, feel free to drop in and just, and we spend about an hour, four to five. And this is a very open format that we would have any member of the council that wants to drop in just to see what's going on. If you're feeling like you want to get a little more done in the nitty-gritty.
Are you going to meet as an urban renewal agency board anytime you want at a council? Or are you going to have those scheduled, announced, planned meetings?
The urban renewal agencies are noticed just like the city council.
It'll just.
They're on the same.
And they're always going to be separate from the council meeting? And how often are those meetings? As often as needed. But I just want to, oh, they're scheduled.
I think, I think twice a year.
Oh, okay, as.
And they're financially somewhat driven a little bit, isn't it? At this point.
But I could, you know, like the mayor said, if there's something hot that you, we'll always be here.
Right, right, right.
If there's something hot and you need us, we're here.
Well, no, I just mean whether you have a fixed schedule.
Yeah, but I think the council as the urban renewal agency, we, I think it's about every six months right now or whenever needed, we will start with like a, the city council meeting. And we try to do it on a night where there isn't a lot and then we will adjourn that and go into the urban renewal agency meeting. But they'll vote, when we do that, they're both noticed.
But your meeting with this group could also be an urban renewal agency meeting.
It could be.
At the same time, simultaneous or afterwards or whatever.
It could be part of that meeting.
Yeah. And normally, the urban renewal board, the council is going to be meeting at the time that it adopts and holds public hearings for a budget.
Yes.
That's one time of the year and then you would think maybe six months after that, kind of this time of the year is the other logical time.
Now, I will say though, that the budget cycle, this discussion should probably happen outside because you get drugged down by the budget. There's not time to have the budget discussions and get that laid to bed and look at the visioning thing and those decisions that you want for the future. So for the agency, it may mean that we meet three times a year.
Yeah.
For this whole combined joint session though, the twice-a-year portion will.
Because up to this point, we've not had much of a discussion on budget, but it will be more.
Going to get.
That's what I was going to say, twice a year sounded good, I just wondered when the two meetings should occur. Should we be talking about bonding or loans or whatever? Should they be coordinated somehow with budget meetings? We should think about when those two meetings should be.
I would think, Marilyn myself, that they should be sometime before the budget process and meetings start to provide input into the budget meeting. And then maybe again, the budget year starts in July, maybe again in October, so like March and October, March, you know, someplace along.
Sounds good.
Or Rick too, you know, as we go into our annual planning, I'm wondering if that might be before or after. Maybe we have some takeaways from our annual planning that relates to this, I don't know.
Well, see, that's why I'm thinking, Scott, if we did it like, if we did our, usually last week in January, first, two weeks of February, we do our council goal setting. Then if we turn around in a month later and do the first meeting and then six months later do the other meeting, I think that's a pretty good cycle.
And I think we'll do that, once we know, when we get the numbers, that's going to be the driver and then maybe just before the goal setting, maybe just after the goal setting.
Sounds good.
So, okay, so for this combined group, twice-per-year work session, the board and committee rep, Scott, gives a report monthly on the committee meetings. So there is that periodic update. And an ad hoc or called as needed for late-breaking news can be done at any time. The URD board meets twice per year, those meetings are noticed. And having these meetings, the work sessions in accordance with the budget and the planning process is probably a good thing. So if I heard October and March, I think that probably is just about right. So what about other kinds of expectations? Does the committee ever struggle to understand, for instance, the parameters that you're, the playing field you're enabled to play in? Do you wonder about whether or not there should be any kind of written reports? Do you have minutes? Do you wonder if they're adequate? I mean, what, are there any other kinds of process guidelines that would be helpful to the committee?
Well, I know Doug does a great agenda helping prepare us, so having staff putting the agenda together and communicating, I mean, that has been very critical for us and Doug will start us off and update us and then over to Walt and then we just move on. But having Doug's participation is a concept for the committee.
Staffing to the committee is very important, I mean, without that staffing, this committee would not be a productive committee. We do have minutes and those do get disseminated. I think that probably the biggest challenge for me certainly is knowing when it's time to go back and do a revisit of the feasibility assumptions that the whole plan's based upon. We haven't quite gotten far enough down the road to actually formally do that, but that's going to take some consultant time. But we're approaching that point because before you do a feasibility, before you do any borrowing, that's going to have to happen. And so I see that over the next six months to a year, there's going to be a, taking a look at the original assumptions that the projections were based on, seeing if there were a head or behind and how Eco-Northwest or whoever views the coming five years as opposed to the way we originally looked at it. So those are very important revisits to have, to do and to not, to not let that just, just not to, the longer we let our assumptions lie without reexamining them, the more risk we take, I think. So that's what I think about and we talk about that in the committee. It does take, it does take funding and consultants to do that, so we don't have an independent ability to initiate that.
Anything else that as a committee member you feel you need in terms of support from the city or its resources?
At the risk of speaking too much, I want to, I want to just say that I'm very grateful to the city that we've had the kind of staff commitment that the city has made. We've had water and light present at almost every meeting and gotten the kind of critical, important, kind of cautionary feedback that staff typically will provide. But that's also true of the city engineer's office where we've gotten good input from the city engineer and timely input and attendance at our advisory committee meetings when we request it and sometimes even without request. So I don't see that as a need because I think it's already been met, but it's really critical to the process being effective.
And it is also, staff has extra time if you need to stop by and talk to them. In addition to what we're, we've talked about at our meetings, they're always available and open for that, so.
Extra time.
I don't.
Makes the time for Cassie.
Yes, that's better, that's better, yeah.
You know, in a way you could think about this as a template for how a committee like this should operate. So I think if you do have some support needs that are filled now, but they're important, like the staffing, it's probably good to memorialize them here in this discussion, if there's anything like that.
Well, you know, one comment I'd like to make and I don't know if other people have, I think it's very important too, that one thing, not just appreciate this committee, but I think one thing that I was taught years and years ago when I first came on the planning commission, then on the city council, as a councillor, and I think we take it to heart, I mean, I do and I think the rest of the council does, and I think as long as we remember this, we'll be okay, is that the city council as our body, we're responsible for one thing and that's setting policy. Staff is responsible for implementing policy and I think the works of this committee and several other committees show it. You know, we have a policy we want to set and I think we have a staff that makes sure that that policy is implemented. And I think that's what makes City of McMinnville so successful at times because the council per se as individuals, not that we don't, we try very hard not to get involved with the implementation of the policy. And so to hear that our staff works well, not just this committee, but I could talk about the visit McMinnville, I could talk about MDP, I could talk about the MDA, I could talk about the chamber, all of them, that we leave it up to our staff and thank God we have a good staff that can implement the policies we see.
They don't just take the time for the committee, they go one step further, they educate the committee so that we can do what we're supposed to do. They go out and find the experts in Albany and Sherwood to bring them in and teach us what we need to know. It's invaluable, it helps you do the job.
Goes right back to one of the opening comments about trust between the council and various organizations. And I think it's that level of detail and staff involvement that makes that, it's kind of the glue that brings that all together for us, citizen participants. I just want to say one other thing that I think is sometimes maybe above and beyond when staff does is that they do a really good job of keeping everything on the web. So designs, meetings, minutes, I've been able to share that with a lot of people, educate other citizens with that. And so I think that's, you know, it's hard to sit here and say, well, what do you need? Because I think we have so many great resources and tools that are being provided to us. So I think, let's jump on the bandwagon, shout out, that's one thing that I find very helpful. Investors that I work with in my development, I've been able to keep them educated on what's going on, position them so that as opportunities come up, you know, we can hopefully participate more in the private investment side of things. So just having all those resources available online, you know, that'd be easy for, it'd be an easy thing to shove off, but I really appreciate having all those things available, so. I think one of the things that became evident, not to talk just to talk, but we had our recent session with assistant city manager for Sherwood specifically, the kind of the structure that we've gone through and the processes that we've gone through and the city involvement and staff involvement. It's amazing to me, I think we probably have no idea how many mistakes we've avoided by going through that process. To hear some of the stories that they went through in their organizations and kind of finding their way and to have the foresight to bring those individuals in and let us share some of their stories, I think was very beneficial for us as a committee. But not in just how do we move forward, but how do we avoid mistakes? And it was real evident, there's a lot of mistakes we could have made that we didn't with some real great staff leadership. So I think Doug's previous involvement in Clement Falls and places before, I think, was very evident in this process because the process was very structured and with the involvement of the different people on the committee, I feel like, you know, it's a very valuable process for all of us, so.
Doug, was that an organization just for urban renewal that they were talking about?
It was the City of Clement Falls. It set up the organization, they were much like the McMinnville City Council.
She said you should join, it cost you so many, but it's worth it. What was she talking about?
There's the Association of Oregon Redevelopment Agencies or AORA.
Okay.
Which we intend, unless the council directs me or my boss directs me otherwise, to join. I think that's a great resource for this group as they have a wealth of information on their website that we could take advantage of and help to continue our education process.
I'd like to say after going to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, everybody sat through AORA's presentation. It was very evident, it's not something we would like to do, that we almost have to do to join them.
Okay, great. So I think we're just about at the end of the meeting, any thoughts in closing?
I'd raise the, just the question, not to try to answer it, but whether, you know, how much urban renewal is being done for McMinnville residents and jobs, et cetera? And how much of it might be done for visitors? I think there's a new dynamic happening, it's always been envisioned on all this that, oh, we're doing this for McMinnville and for the people here. And there's suddenly a half a million dollars a year going to be spent to draw more visitors than we have now and that's going to push more need for parking and more need for rooms and more need for this. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but this effort could easily get pushed towards, well, we need to do this in the downtown because of all these visitors. And I guess there's decisions that you make at the time. But I just think that that's a new player in the game that we have to really keep close marks of as we're going forward because it could really change the dynamic of what we need to do.
And I think that's a fine line, Jeb, because it's exactly right. What I hope is by going through all this, it's going to attract more and more visitors. But what it does, it helps, to me, hopefully increases more and more employment within the City of McMinnville, which is good for our residents. So, you know, it's kind of a catch-22, where does it, where does one stop and the other starts?
The two buses are coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other thoughts in closing?
Just one small spin-off of that is, I think that is why it's so important to keep our eye also on the ball in terms of keeping our manufacturers very healthy in this process because I love tourism, of course, but also service industry, jobs are typically very low-paying jobs and we need to make sure that we also have our eye on holding on to manufacturing jobs that have the potential of hopefully being higher wage earning jobs for our residents.
I think the acknowledgement that that balance is very tenuous. I think the acknowledgement that that balance is very, um, tenuous at times is really important, because it, it does help move some of the decisions forward. We have tourists that come in, that's a form of economic development, the infrastructure's a form of economic development, things like, um, Kelly's Development, it, but there is a balance, especially for jobs.
One of the good things about the representation of this group, uh, in, in going through the processes that we go through, uh, and our recommendations, is you have three Economic Development Board members here, um, so there's constant communication between organizations, uh, so I think just, just having that mutual representation, um, we've tried to do that all throughout, uh, different entities with, uh, Chamber of Commerce and, and whatnot, to have mutual representation, and having Scott on our committee has been huge for this city council representation, so I think you see a lot of cross, um, efforts, uh, different, different people to make those connections and keep those, so that one thing doesn't kind of get pushed out in front of the other, or something left behind, more importantly. Um, so I think, you know, having three, and three people here on that board, um, is a great help, um, as we guide our resources to the economic development as well, and how we can, they'll come together, there's gonna be stuff within this, this entity and economic development, they're gonna come together, state resources can be brought in, different things to make projects happen as well. I've been a participant of some of those state project, uh, funds of, um, to do, um, business stuff, so, um, there's ways to bring that in, uh, to help, um, production-based type business, uh, manufacturing, food production, things like that, so, um, I think we've got a good, good representation, cross-representation. Took me a long time to say that, didn't it? Sorry.
You did well, though, Kelly.
Well, it's, it's exciting to see how quickly this committee is moving, and, you know, the transportation bond really front-loaded this, but I could say the same thing with tourism and our Visit McMinnville, you wanna see a committee that is moving along much quicker, just because of what's happening there, is, is, and so that's all going to work hand-in-hand with the things that we're doing in Alpine, Granery, Third Street. They're gonna be coming, you guys, and, uh, as Cassie and I know, 'cause you sit on that committee, uh, we were putting more time in at that committee than this committee, and so it was almost a full-time job.
Well, now you're retired, Scott.
But, I, I can't, it's just, you know, we are at a, we are at a very interesting crossroads with the things that we've been talking about and planning, all of a sudden are in a, a position to, uh, be moving forward in a big way.
Doug, do we have any other business? I think we're at the end of our agenda.
No, our council is. No, I, I, it's, it's been a tremendous evening.
Anybody else, any other business for, for this part of the meeting?
No, I think when you get the entire di, dais covered, I think we may be coming to an end.
We still have some room, we could fill out a couple more pages.
Yeah, we don't have that much paper either in it or annual, do we?
I know.
I was gonna say, this is much, but you know, if you look at our low, our goal setting, Sue's done our goal setting for more years than I could ever remember. I think when I first came on the council, we used to kind of start with about this mission, it's now we're lucky to fill two or three, I think.
That's right. Guys get, you guys get right down to it.
That's right.
I, you know, I would just like to say that I work with quite a few cities, um, and, uh, I'm just always amazed by the elegance of the public involvement process in the City of McMinnville, and, you know, the, just the, the civility of your, your, uh, structures here really show in the beauty of your town, so I've, I'm a big fan, I truly am, I so admire what you've done here in your city. It's lovely, and you're, you're all to be congratulated. So, absolutely.
Hey, that being said, if nobody has anything else, do you have any more closing remarks?
I do not.
If not, it is now, uh, 8:55, and I will officially adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory. And if we can take about five minutes and we'll go, Blake, uh, we'll probably sit here, and the audience, we'll see what's gotten to say, but we're gonna move right into our city council.